This time we'll call the Tuesday, July nineteen twenty twenty two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Learn a different like status and myself, Jack Willie, are your supervisors? Lisa and York's Auditor's Office and the one in Cody are administrative assistant. And the first item on our agenda is Mike Clausen from the Jackson County Engineers Office.
Morning, Mike.
The first thing I have is a couple agreements, a couple of agreements from City of Miles and the City of Bellevue. For the rural county transportation program project. To approve those.
Can you do them at one time or you want separate?
That's up to me.
Make a motion to approve both projects as presented.
Second, the motion and a second to approve the projects, one for Miles and one from. All those in favor?
Okay, next I have a driveway permit for Kevin Hocken. It's Washington Township, section twenty four on Green Island Road. Yes, the board to approve that.
Motion to approve. I would second, we have a motion and a second to approve the farm entrance permit for Ken and Natkin. All those in favor? And I motion carry.
Next, I have some final vouchers for our asphalt projects last year. This is for Z thirty four. Which is STBG's dash swap dash CO forty nine parent eighty three, um, for eighteenth Avenue. I guess the board to approve the final vouchers on that.
So what the final voucher coming in July, are we doing last year's? Funding yet, or is it, how's that work?
This is coming out of the farm to market.
Okay.
Um, actually, it's a swap project, so it's a federal aid swap money, so. It's not really based on.
Fiscal years. It's good, yeah, that's good. I move to approve second motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I motion carry.
Okay, and then the next project is FM CO forty nine current eighty four, which is the Z twenty project north of Springville. I've got the final voucher for that. We'd ask the board to prove that.
Motion to approve. Now, we second, motion and a second to approve the final voucher, all those in favor? I motion carry.
They both turned out really good too, didn't they?
Yeah, they do look nice.
Yeah, we got the rumble strips on the side of one of them, right?
Uh, no.
Okay, so we did, I thought it.
We did not this year on the Iron Hill.
Okay.
Road.
That's what I'm looking for some say.
Hundred and fifty. Yeah, that's where I was then.
That turned out pretty good.
Either there, you're driving the.
I know they weren't the center.
Yeah. Um, so then the other thing I guess is just a project updates with the mudjackers. Uh, Dan Coles working around the county various spots where there's some dips we're trying to. At those level though, they're gonna work on the bridge out here on being to here in a day or two. Trying to help that and then the crack sealers are down on C thirty four, uh, sealing cracks. And we're pouring the pavement on the north side of the bridge today. They're out starting six thirty this morning. Hopefully by the end of the week, I have all the payment court out there.
How many days does that have to sit?
Um, we'll set a week. Yeah. We've got, uh, as of last week, we had forty, almost forty one percent of the work is completed with only thirty two percent of the time used, so.
And it's.
You know, I think it's really seems to have gone really smoothly. Because I, you know, I expected all kinds of complaints of people being tied up, but that hasn't been the case. And I think they've done a great job. And I see you out there a lot.
I am out there, so not every day, but. There's one, one start form, so.
I did have a couple inquiries last week about if there was any possibility. That the crews could go out and get rid of some of the brush along the caves road. Because everybody, I mean, that's a haven for deer. And, um, they said it's so close to the road that there, there, I mean, some of one lady said. I only drive fifteen miles an hour because I'm so afraid I'm gonna hit a deer. And then somebody else says, well, they drove forty five miles an hour, but and. And actually, we were out on the cave road last Sunday for a birthday party. And we had two deer go in front of us on the way back and we were driving about forty five, but. They said, if we just clear the ditch of some of that brush, maybe we'd have a better chance, so whatever you can do, they will appreciate.
Okay, I'll bring it up to Roger.
Okay.
Any certain areas? Probably more towards the west.
Yeah.
Siding towards camp more, it's a little willier.
Oh, yeah. And these, this would have been, oh. Kind of in the neighborhood where Ken and Barb Wright live. There's some brush, yeah, yeah, so whatever you can do, they'll appreciate.
Okay. Have we heard from our patchers yet? No.
Uh, actually, after last week, I emailed them to see if we could get an update. He did call. Um, they said it'd be the first or second week of August. They're working over in Jones County right now. They have one more road to finish. I figured there was gonna be some overruns on that, so they weren't quite sure. So I would probably guess it'd probably be the second or third week.
Yeah.
In August anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Well, Matt, it's not quite nine fifteen and that's when we have visitors and citizens, but we'll have you come up ahead and, and maybe we'll be done by nine fifteen.
All right, I've heard Kim Glazer too, along with.
Let you.
All right. Morning. So we wanted to meet with you guys and talk about, um, the lead paint program. Currently, we have one in Delaware, Dubuque County. And that one's gonna be expiring next June. HUD has opened up. The application process at this time and we were considering including all our counties, so Dubuque County, Delaware County, Jackson County, Cedar County, and Clinton County. We will exclude the city of Clinton because they actually have their own grant.
Right.
Um, right now, Macoaketa runs with that as well, the city of Macoaketa. Um, and then we would also exclude the city of Dubuque because they have their own. Um, we do see a need in Jackson County for it because currently we also have a healthy homes grant that covers all five of our counties. And out of the two hundred and forty nine applicants, a hundred and five of those resided, um, Jackson County. And then we also have an aging in place grant that covers all five of our counties. Um, we have a hundred and thirty applicants on that and forty two, um. Resided in Jackson County. So again, we do see the need in Jackson County. Um, the nice part with these grants is they not only cover the incorporated areas, but they can cover, they cover unincorporated areas. So you can get a house out in the country. That's something we can go in and inspect. And remove the lead hazards and also there is a healthy homes component with this lead, lead paint grant that allows us to address. Maybe they got water issues, maybe they're missing smoke alarms, but you know, maybe they need a replacement or something we can't address with the lead paint money. That we can address with this other bucket of money that we, we get with this grant. With, with this particular one and why we're here is we do need local match for that. Um, so we're going around asking all the counties if they would be willing to contribute. We're looking at a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and twenty five houses to do in four years. So it's roughly maybe seven houses per county per year. We're guessing two thousand for local match, so you're looking fourteen to fifteen thousand a year. That we would, we would ask. What's, what's some of the criteria that they have to meet? They have to be low income or?
Low to moderate income, but it's very generous for a family household of one, it's forty nine thousand for two, it's like. Fifty five. They're generous, you don't have to be like low poverty.
It's usually eighty percent. And the other, the other part with that is that affects children under six the most, so you would either need it. It could be a visiting, so it could be a grandparent that has grandkids come to visit, you know, it could be a family or with kids under six. Pretty much, they just kind of sign an affidavit that children do visit the residents that are under six.
So is this for people who own homes or is it for rental property too?
Oh, so. And we do ask the rental property owner to put their own match in ten percent of the projects.
And is it by the? Owners' income or by the people living?
The tenants, everything's based on the residence who's living in the property.
So would people who own their homes have priority over rentals? Or have you looked at that?
We have not done that in the past. We haven't needed to. It's been first come, first served. And it's worked out well that we're getting a good mix of both.
What's the program that's expiring? Do we have a hard time getting applicants to apply for some of that? For a while here, we did it up in Dubuque and Delaware County from, from past experience, so. City of Clinton and Macoaketa, that was, they're actually on their second grant. Their first grant took us some time to get up and going, but that's, it seems like with any new grant to get the word out, to get our staffing up to. To par, you know, so that first round, yeah, was difficult, but I can say on our second round, because like I said, Clinton, say Clinton was funded a second time. We're, we're meeting our benchmarks, um, and that's even right now with, with supply chain issues. So again, you get the second one up, you get the word of mouth out there, you kind of get the train moving. It's a lot better, um, getting that momentum, getting the interest even, even I think in Clinton right now and we're hoping we have waiting list of people that wanna. Participate, which is great.
Um, how are you getting the word out?
They spoke, um, we've done, I think, some radio advertisement. We've done billboards up in Dubuque.
Affairs and.
Then any sort of, yeah, I guess, um, there's even been like some kids days or some. Like those types of groups that we see, there's a kids fair, you know, in the morning, I think we've been down to Macoaketa on Saturday mornings.
Yeah, I am staying bad.
Yeah. We'll get a table and get our stuff out that way. Word of mouth, once we get into communities, then, you know, fixing somebody's house, it spreads that way.
City officials have been really good in some of the smaller communities. I mean, they kind of have certain houses in mind that. They try to get to work with our program to really improve the communities.
And on our healthy homes and aging in place, when I think some communities put it out in their utility bills. Too, it's like on both of these grants, we're way, we have way more applicants than we're gonna be able to help.
We spend on average twenty thousand for the lead hazards, which we're doing window siding, socket patient porches. For the healthy homes items, we're looking to spend on average about six thousand, so we're doing electrical plumbing, moisture.
They're writing an article not too long ago, and the average age at the home in Jackson County, I think, is ninety three years old. So there's a lot of.
A lot of that, I mean, yeah, the average age, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a need. What do they do with this? Is there mitigation type thing? Do they take it? Material off or they covering?
Both.
Depends on what, like a window we would remove.
Yeah.
And put a new one in. Um, but it just kind of depends what it is. Sometimes as long as it's intact and solid and not healing, not creating a dust or friction surface. Safe. And so it kind of really wants depends on when our inspectors get in there. You know, it's best to remove it, like I said, windows, they're gone, you know, a lot of times they, yeah, they'll cycle, you know, there might be a wood siding that. It's still under there, but vinyl will go over it and kind of encapsulate it. Or window trim that wrapped that with aluminum or like sets off itself, put aluminum sockets out, so.
We do also try to partner with other community organizations, weatherization or V and A. I've gotten some USDA funds to put with our money. On this, I have seventy thousand in one of the houses we've done, but. So we do try to find other partnering funds to really make a bigger bang for the buck.
So the rental properties, the rental properties that the owner is being the balance, not.
Correct, okay. And we've just kind of thought since they're a business.
Yeah.
They can contribute that.
London's number.
So we're looking at applying for about a hundred to a hundred and twenty five houses. Split between our five counties, so that would be roughly. I think it's like six point one per year, you know, so six to seven houses per year.
Yeah.
Per county. And we're thinking the local match would be about two grand. And again, that's if they're all owner occupied. So I guess it's kind of worst case scenario, you know, if you would do a rental one where the. Where the owner of the rental would be putting in the contribution, that wouldn't fall back on. The count.
No, I know, but my thought is, is the price of this is not gonna be down to, to either mitigate or material or whatever it may be. So four years from now, two thousand dollars might not touch.
But, yeah. Your match wouldn't, isn't specifically going just towards the project because it's towards a whole amount that we're applying. Okay. With HUD, you have to apply for a certain dollar amount, and then you have to have ten percent of that dollar amount as match. So it's not going to change depending on what prices do it. We'll have committed to HUD a certain amount of match.
Okay, and you said you were working with Dubuque, Delaware and. Jackson Counties or which counties? We're working with Dubuque, Delaware, Jackson, Cedar and Clinton. Cedar. All five of the CIs. Counties.
And HUD typically hasn't funded a lot of small rural communities in the past. Pretty much metropolitan areas, New York, Altamore, Philadelphia. So they're kind of recognizing that they have a gap here, so we've. I felt fortunate to get the funding we've gotten for these small communities. And if we don't spend it here, they'll just, they have plenty of need in Philadelphia, whatever, so. It's a good opportunity, the timing's right, that they're recognizing our rural areas needed also.
Well, as you brought up already, I was housing them, I was housing. Yeah, it is. And when are we talking about here? That was, well, yeah, right. Applications are due.
August eighth.
Yeah.
So we have to have a committed amount of match in our application.
So HUD only releases, that's why it's, it's tough for us. They released this, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
There's like a six week turnaround time to get these. To get these written, funding committed, and, and we do, we're in a different scenario than like. City of Dubuque, they'll just commit since they're an entitlement city, they get CDVG money, they can match with CDVG money. Well, we don't get CDVG money, so we can't, we're not an entitlement city like that or an entitlement. So we can't, so we have to go out to our, you know, commies and partners and ask, you know, if they wanna, they want to, um. Help with that local man, so.
Well, obviously, that's not in our budget, so.
And it sounds to me like you've got about a sixty thousand dollar asking.
Over four years.
Yeah.
Four years.
Because this, if it's awarded, probably best case, it would start in the spring, maybe a house or two would be done yet. This year, but it would really roll into your next.
Budget, yes.
Yes. Are we the first county you approached? And now we arrived Dubuque yesterday and they approved.
I think it's good program.
And, yeah, it's protecting the children in the county. That's who our basic goal was, or making sure their health is protected. No lead poisoning, no mental health issues with that. The bonus is that the property values are increased. That's how I look at children's health first, bonus is the properties.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really for, for the homeowner ones, the rental things that can. I mean, a lot of their rents are being subsidized already and it's just. Uh, I don't feel like feeding the. Whatever the animal that's running all that, I mean, because there's a lot of rental stuff going on that's not up to par.
One, I think, if it's sixty thousand, I mean, we can cap it at less, you know, and then shift to. Different. You know, shift a couple houses to a different county too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my preference would be homeowners that reside in it rather than rented properties, but I guess she can't.
Yeah. But then there's kids, probably not.
Yeah, HUD's vision or focus is that they aren't worried or. They don't think about who owns the property, just the people who are living in it. And they want to help the most disadvantaged populations, which often are poor, which often are in rental property. And facts are, they are living in the worst housing stock. As it is, so we don't penalize them by not sure addressing their property, where they're living. And I know that's hard to, you know, when you think you're giving the landlord this money and fixing their building, but. I just have to think about who I'm helping. There's a lot of children that live in some pretty. Nasty rental.
Actually, some of those properties should be condemned.
I guess, where do we, I, I just, I guess I'm questioning where we come with fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, just.
I think, I think my, my preference would be to table this till next week so that we can look at funding. And see what we would do and how we would come up with the funding. And that would still be before your deadline.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and we would just need something in writing once.
Certainly. And what's your plans as far as visiting other counties? Next week, Monday, Tuesday, I can add the other three.
Yeah.
Dubuque, Delaware and who?
Cedar and Clinton.
So, I think Clinton's next Monday morning, Delaware's next Monday afternoon, and Cedar's next Tuesday morning. And maybe we did yesterday. I forgot, I forgot up.
But yeah, if you don't, can't approve that many, I fancy we could cap it in your county. For a different amount.
So Jones County is not a part of the area. With some stuff, yes.
It seems like we skipped them, if they're, we're kind of surrounded of them.
They're, they're not with our original five, I'll call it. So when we were originally formed, they were not part of our five, but with Iris. Because they're with the Cedar Rapids cog. And since Cedar Rapids cog doesn't really have an Iris type entity, Jones County asked to join with us. It's the same with the Housing Authority. Jones County, I think, is part of ECI, is in ECI's region plus, um, Scott County plus Bettendorf are all in, so. It gets a little messy, but we're just talking our original five, and yeah, so Jones is not part of our original five. Well, yeah, I guess I'd like to think about this a little bit, yeah. You know, the other part too is. Again, we don't have enough time to get there, and I know it's, but. Cities may contribute too, but I just, we have a hard enough time getting to five supervisors meetings to, you know, get, but there could be city. Well, yeah, it seems a little unreasonable that they throw it out here this month, and you gotta make a decision by, you know, whoever it may be, whatever entity's making a decision, whether it be the city, whether it be. You know, the, the, the prior program was focused more on the city though, right? And the city.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we've done probably thirty plus in the Culcatas or this.
Yeah.
Because right now, the one that's in Clinton and Macoaketa, we're doing eighty five, I think, is our target, and there wasn't a match on that. Yes, there is, so the city of Macoaketa is throwing a match and the city of Clinton are both putting the match in on that. And that's relatively the same amount? Yeah.
You got a motion table?
So that we can second. We're wishing a second table action until our next regular meeting and, um. We'll make a decision and let you know.
Okay, thank you very much.
All in favor of table?
All right.
Well, I don't see any visitors up there, I don't think, so, um, Lisa.
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July twelfth, twenty twenty two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. And the July thirteenth, twenty twenty two board proceedings as written by Human Resource Administrator Becky Chapin authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Motion to approve, second. Motion and a second to approve the publication of the minutes of the two meetings, all those in favor?
And I.
Motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty nine cents.
So.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the claims? Any comments?
I do have some questions on the two of the claims, and I think I got them answered, so at this time, I'm.
But I, I really think, um, we need to have a. Heart to heart talk about. Some of those issues.
We need to adopt a policy.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we need to tighten up our strength, so to speak. I have concerns and questions and. I think we just need to talk about it and adopt a policy.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry.
Motion needed to accept, place unfiled, the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the June fifteenth, twenty twenty two meeting.
Oh, who?
Second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Veterans Affairs Commission, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry.
The next item on my agenda is something that. I, I believe is really needed. Um, this morning, I would like to have a motion to approve the closing of the courthouse to the public. On Friday, August fifth at three P M for a mandatory employee safety training. Um, I think that we would not get a good. I don't think employees would come to a safety meeting if it were held after hours. I think that it's imperative at this time, based on what's happening in our nation when it comes to school violence, mall shootings. Um, even shootings by a church. I think that we need to talk as employees within the walls of the courthouse, we need to talk about. Safety, and I think it's time that we have a meeting to discuss all of this. Um, I've been in contact with Sheriff Kilburg. Chief Deputy Cracker, Security Officer Unki and myself. And we've talked about situations and, and several things that need to be done. And we would like to start at least with safety training, so I would like this to be a mandatory training for everybody in the building. Okay. Probably accept extension. I'll clarify, I would like the court system and all of the employees, um, here at the courthouse to participate in this training.
We have a representative. Heard they're moving out soon, it'll still be, if one would show up, just.
You know, we're, we're going to have it, I, I mean, I can extend that to them if you'd like.
I think you should at least give them the opportunity.
In the building, yeah.
Okay, all right, I can do that. But I think closing the building, so all employees and everybody, I did contact Kim Hess with the Clerk of Court. And she is in favor of it. I have not talked to anybody through the probation system at all. But at least I have talked to Kim Hess.
Is this something like, uh, like a public type thing where you have so many days before or after? Do we have to publish it?
I will be notified.
Close the courthouse, I mean.
I will be, that's why I wanted plenty of notification here today. I will be talking to the newspaper, obviously, I'll be talking to Nancy here, I will also be talking to the radio station to get that on, that we will be closing. There is a situation in the courtroom on that day, starting at three o'clock, but. It is my understanding that they feel that they can work around it.
You know what I'm saying is because all of a sudden somebody comes here at four o'clock and wants to do business and it's closed or three thirty, we're gonna have.
But how else can I do this?
Yeah, I don't know either.
And, and try and get the maximum number of people here.
Well, I think we have ample time to publicize it. And have, you know, we can have public service announcements on KMAQ and, um, I, I think it's an important event and.
We're starting to look at. In this building, all lives matter and not one office is more important than another office. And we have started to look at individual offices of potential changes that need to be done. I would anticipate that probably at some point I'll be coming back to you and asking for some money or for some approval to do. I would anticipate that probably at some point I'll be coming back to you and asking for some money or for some approval to do a few things. In visiting with Chief Deputy Cracker, we've identified a couple of. Situations that I think we need to maybe correct and.
Well, we've been talking a long time about a magic lockdown or lock-in or lock-out, lock-in, you know what? We just can't figure that out, maybe, maybe Chief Deputy had better ideas and what we added our previous, some of our previous.
And I think we need to revisit some of the things. We know they get a test last week. It's a good thing they did a test last week. Unfortunately, we didn't have a failure, but that's good, and that's why you test. And that situation has been corrected. So it's kind of, we're trying to, we're trying to make safety, you know. I don't know how else, if I were to say to people that you could stay after work. I don't know how many people would stay to attend training.
Well, it's interesting, if it's mandatory.
Well, if it's mandatory, it should be on there, I mean, on our time, out there time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Closing the courthouse on August fifth at three P M for mandatory employee safety training. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I mean, it's a great idea.
With that being said, thank you.
With that question, do we have a representative meeting coming up pretty soon?
A security meeting coming up. Yeah, the Security Committee has not met for months. And this, honestly, I will tell you that I'm the one that started this, and I'm not, I am not patting myself on the back. But I think that when you watch the national news and you see situations that have happened. In the United States. And, and just as a point, my niece's husband was involved in the Glenwood shooting in Indiana. So I'll be visiting with him concerning that situation, but. It's time that at least we as employees, we talk about some things, everybody gets on the same page. We understand what's gonna happen, should we have a situation? And who's gonna do what and what should we do? It's time that we at least talk about it, because should something else happen in this building? I would like to say, we had a meeting, we've talked about it, we followed the plan. But we can't do that until we have this meeting, and. I think it's very imperative, so I'm, I appreciate and I thank you for passing the motion today to close the courthouse, and we'll see what happens next.
It was ironic, Saturday afternoon, I worked at Clinton Engines Museum. And of course, there were lots and lots of people here for the dog show. And a number of them came in and looked around and this one gentleman from Texas came in. And he walked around, and pretty soon he came back and he says. Would you come with me? I, I got a question I want to ask you, and I said, sure, so I got up and I followed him. Well, he went to the Tommy gun. And he wanted to know if he could buy that. And I said, buy it, I says. I says, it's valued at like five, five thousand, five hundred dollars, and he says, I'll give you six thousand cash right now. And I, I, I said to him, I says, well, fortunately. I have to say no, because it doesn't belong to the Historical Society, it's on loan to the Historical Society from the Sheriff's Department. And I said, so it's not for sale, but it just made me feel eerie. And I thought, the last thing I needed was to sell that boom, and then next thing, here, somebody in Texas was shooting somebody up, and. But I just thought. And he had a daughter with him, and she said, you'd really paid six thousand dollars for that? And he said, yep. Right now, I would.
That's probably a bargain.
It just gave me shivers. Yeah, they're aware of it there.
How's the security there? Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to buy it that bad, I mean, would they break and steal it?
There's camera there, and there's an alarm on it. And.
Go ahead, Jack, pick it up and see if it works.
The key, it's, there's a special case that's built that you, it's plexiglass and it's. It's as protected as we can make it, and it has its own camera that looks right at the person that's watching or looking at the, at the gun.
To the floor or something too, where they can't just pick it up?
No, it's, it's built into the wall.
Oh, okay, even better.
Rich, rich rock roar, built the box and it, it goes into the wall. That just, it just, I can't, oh, my goodness sakes, you wanna buy it? I thought you got, I thought you got six thousand dollars cash on you right now.
Yeah, I'm sure it's. Yeah, and like you said, it's the history behind it.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
And it was funny, because there was another woman from Ohio that came in, and there was another lady with her. And after they got done walking through the museum. The woman that was with her said, you know, I am just amazed, she says, I live in McCorkin and I've never been here. And she says, I just can't believe all of the wonderful things that you have on display. And I just went over, patted her on the shoulder, he says, well, it's about time you came and visited us. Okay, I'll shut up now and.
On the, for on my agenda, Sarah is unable to be here today, but I know that last week. You as a board had approved the. Temporary easement and the maintenance agreement for the Law Enforcement Center with the Spiegel. A J Spiegel's property, Spiegel Family Realty Company Iowa LLC is who we are dealing with. And with your approval last week, then Sarah did forward it to A J, he sent it on to his attorney, there were a few minor. Changes that were done on it, but today what you'll see is. With the final, I guess I'll say the final draft or the final piece that we need board approval for us to proceed, so today. I would need a motion to approve and authorize your chair's signature on the temporary construction easement. And maintenance agreement with Spiegel Family Realty Company Iowa LLC.
Are you approving both of them?
I would second that, but the, what's the thank you to them for being cooperative.
We have a motion and a second to approve temporary construction easement and the maintenance agreement, all those in favor?
And with that, that's all that I have for the board today.
This time we're rejoined by Luann Goki, our administrative assistant, who played in the mud all last weekend.
Yes, you did. Good morning. Okay, calendar for this week, six o'clock tonight, it's a conservation board meeting in Crystal for Larry. And also at six o'clock is the Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting for Jack. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July twentieth, at one P M is the Jackson County Security Advisory Committee meeting for Mike. And at four thirty tomorrow afternoon is the E C I A set of meetings, they always do them together. For Jack, and that will be by Zoom only. Thursday, July twenty-first, at one thirty is the Iowa Economic Development Partnering Webinar. For any of you that want to attend that, and also one thirty is the I C A P webinar to discuss jail liability, and that is also by Zoom. For any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth at nine A M. At ten thirty that morning, Jack has a regional advisory committee meeting scheduled for Davenport. Or by Zoom, I don't, I assume you're not going to go to that meeting, Jack, since it's the middle of our meeting.
Yeah, probably not.
And also at six o'clock that night will be the Jackson County Fair Parade, we got the Jackson County Fair, so.
I have one on Thursday.
Okay, I might not know about that.
Another person calling, wanted to talk about this as well, I'll be at that meeting. Moving forward on that too, they get no ease with signing stuff. We've got some questions about easements.
Yeah, I, I had sat in a little bit during the last meeting, I was just kind of curious about that, how that's going with the, with the agreements and.
The person I talked to, the concern was they put down some new blacktop. Would be replaced and, you know, the follow-up on that.
I think they can do a pretty good job with that though, because they did that a lot of times in, in towns, you know, when they're digging up waterline breaks and such, but.
I did pass that.
That project needs to keep moving forward, to be honest, yeah.
And they were, they were good with the project, they were just concerned about. The aftermath, and like, well, these guys do that, they know what they're doing.
Community meeting, Larry, or what is that, and where is it at?
I think it's at the Pavilion down by the.
Three o'clock on Thursday?
If it's different, I'll be.
You can send an email. And how did they get that out to the public, because that's the first ever.
I mean, they sent letters to everybody.
And said that that's gonna be a meeting on that day?
Is that E C I A?
Yeah, I wish I would have thought about when Matt was here.
I can add Sharon too.
And I know that Tom Devine is our next appointment, but I, I did give Luann. The list, inventory list from the Welcome Center, so she was gonna type it up to give everybody copy of that. And then we're gonna have to have a heart-to-heart discussion on what we're gonna do. I did ask Bonnie about the school equipment and stuff that was there. And their area upstairs on the second floor of the museum. Has desks and all of the stuff, and she said, she says, I just don't have any place to put it, so. We're gonna have to decide what, what we will do.
Still chances for it. Still chances for it.
On the desk?
Okay, whatever.
We'll let you be the chairman of that.
Like my dad said, you can never get a dog away, but you can sell them, because if there were something, then people.
Does anybody know if, if. They did go get the artwork?
I know that Marty was down there on a Thursday morning, probably two weeks ago. If he got the artwork, I don't know. I just received a text from Marty, he had, he has to leave, so he is no longer here. He had to leave, so I can visit with him.
I just wanna know, because I, I don't want anything to happen to it.
I'm going, for lack of a better word, I'm going to assume that he took it unless it was too heavy, because I think he was down there alone, I don't believe that he took Mike with him. But I know that he was down there on that Thursday morning.
Some of those pieces would take two people.
Oh, yeah, some of them are.
I mean, there you put one.
And they're metal. So they would be heavy.
And you can't put that in the van, I would, or can you?
Well, carefully on the floor. I mean, you would, I don't think you could put all four pieces in there. I know one's a smaller one, but. A couple of those are.
I will put it on my list to talk to him about that.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess, I was gonna call in, but our lights lit, so. Okay, at this time, we're reconvening the meeting, and we're being. Joined by Tom Devine, the Jackson County Area Tourism Association Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Are doing. Tourism in Jackson County is alive and well, yeah, we, we experienced last year, we experienced a little downturn, of course. And, and those numbers last year, by last year, I mean, the, the numbers that we have are from twenty twenty. We, we're usually a year behind as far as where we are. Twenty nineteen was a banner year for us, we had like thirty-six million dollars in economic impact. In Jackson County alone, just from tourists coming into Jackson County. Last year, we dropped to about twenty, or about nineteen, or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-nine thousand million. So, we had a downturn, but everything's looking on the upturn now, we're, we're actually, actually anxious to see the numbers, because. What we experienced last year, what we're, what I'm finding from the tourism partners. Specifically like the McCorkin Cave State Park, now the, the offshore development in Bellevue. Is that they're, they're turning people away, and they, they have been all last year. The caves were, at one point, I was talking to Scott, yeah, the two-month. Ninety-three percent occupancy is campground, and that's for all seven days, not just weekends, so. Things were, things were on the uptick last year, and, and they continue this year, we're seeing a lot of. A lot of people coming from, and, and I'll share with you a little bit how I get these numbers, but a lot of people coming from the Rockford. Madison and even Peoria areas. We concentrate a lot on the, on the southern Wisconsin and western Illinois. Market and western Illinois kind of even pushing into Chicago, the west, western suburbs of Chicago. And we have for years publicized or advertised to that western suburb group. We're now building on that and, and going up into the Wisconsin area, because we're finding a lot of people are coming from that area, Rockford as well. So, we, last, last year, one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention that, that we did was. We had with being down the year before, the Welcome Center not being open, we had some extra funds that we didn't spend by having, not having. Staffed, so my board decided to go. Pretty full force into what Iowa tourism offers to entities like us, whether it be. Counties, cities, CDBs. They have a co-op program, and we, we put a little over seventy-four hundred dollars into that program. And different things that we did with that program were. Illinois Country Living is, is a, is a western Illinois publication of about three hundred thousand that it goes to. We advertise in that, we always, well, always, the last couple of years, we've advertised in Moline on a billboard down there. I think we talked about that last year, we did that again this year. Although we expanded that, they had a co-op opportunity that we could put that same advertisement on. A rotating billboard that hit in. Mad, or in Minneapolis, St. Paul, Omaha, Kansas City. Des Moines and Moline, so it was on a rotating basis for two months, as well as being on a regular rotating basis down here in Moline. Couple of the other ones were the. It, it, it's a naturalist magazine that, that comes out, we were also in our Iowa and the Iowa, and there was a. Co-op that we could get in both of those magazines, so we, we pretty much. Hit those areas that we think that, that we should be hitting. How, how we determined that in the past is just kind of word of mouth, you know, when people come in, we ask them where they're coming from, where we find out through our, our. Our partners, our members, where they get most of their visitors from. We have expanded this last year, we, we invested in, in what we call, what they call Arrivalist. It's a program that's put on by the State Tourism Office, and it is, Arrivalist is an organization that monitors. Three hundred and eighty thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty million cell phones. So if you go into an area and you're in an area for more than a day, and you're from more than fifty miles away. It will register your cellphone as being in there, and it will tell where those people are from, how long they stayed. And we can really tell the economic impact. That Arrivalist information is a little behind, in other words, I can't get, I can't get information right now for. Heritage Days, for example, and I'm really anxious to see those numbers, or, or Bellevue Rodeo, that's another one, I'm really anxious to see those numbers. The May numbers just came out, so the June numbers will be coming out in about twenty-five, thirty days, so we'll have a better idea. And how that's gonna help us is, where are we going to put our dollars in the future, where are we gonna advertise in those co-ops, what are the best? And how that's gonna help us is where are we going to put our dollars in the future? Where are we gonna advertise in those co-ops? What are the best ones for us to be in? And uh, again, I, I think we're gonna see a lot of it's gonna be that Rockford, Madison, uh, western suburbs of, of Chicago area. Uh, so we'll, we'll continue. We have uh, put in for this next year, um, some very similar. Types of co-op, but even some more, more state of the art types of co-op. So Jern is one and. I, I wish I could tell you the, if, the parameters and, and how exactly that works, but uh, they actually. We consult with them and they actually give us a marketing. Plan that we can roll out and based on what we like to promote. So um, we haven't decided yet. We, we're gonna be, have a meeting here on Thursday, a, a marketing meeting. We're gonna decide. What are those co-ops we're gonna take this next year and invest in, but uh, we've got the opportunity. We, we put in, this, the state gives us. Uh, an okay that we have been accepted. Everything that we asked for, we got accepted for, and we've got until September to decide which ones we do actually wanna take. And run with it. So exciting, uh, the marking uh, and marketing of what. Where we're looking to, to uh, get, have visitors come from. One of the emphasis my board has uh, has decided in the last few months is. To work a lot more towards local being. And local meaning within a hundred mile radius of Jackson County. Um, my board's feeling is that a lot of people are gonna be doing the day trips and they're gonna be doing the weekend trips and not so much the long travel. We're gonna ignore those. We're gonna still market for them. We've already committed for that, but um, with the fuel prices the way they are, their feelings are, is we're gonna be pulling. Our best opportunities for people from within a hundred miles. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Looks like the campgrounds are being filled, so that's good.
They are.
Yeah, I was amazed at how many people were at the fairgrounds for that week with dogs.
They.
There's some nice campers there.
Filled that up. That was a, that's another one I'm anxious to see and, and uh, Joe Simpson keeps a good, good track of where people are coming from. In, you know, informally, but this Arrivalist will give us real good detail of where those people are coming from.
We had from Texas, Tennessee, Ohio, Arizona, and all that came into the museum.
My uh, I, my sister came down uh, for a visitation and couldn't find a room, so. We were not only campgrounds full, but our motels and hotels were, were full and bed and breakfast were full as well, so. Good weekend and, and they continue uh, uh, they continue to bring some great things into the fairgrounds as, as uh, next week, the uh. The fair starts on, on Tuesday with the parade and all, all this next week. It promises be another, another big week for Jackson County.
Good. Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, we love seeing it too.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess the only other thing we need to talk about is Welcome Center, the building itself.
Okay.
Um, I did go down and take an inventory of everything that was there.
Sure.
All of the desks and all of that. We did tell Marty to go down and take down the artwork, cause we don't want anything to happen to that.
Right.
And Lisa says she thinks maybe he did get it, but we're not sure.
Okay.
So we'll find out about that, but I, I guess, you know, if there's any. I know they said something about maybe you would have an area out at the interpretive center where you could have your desk.
There, there, um, there is an area. There's also uh, talk. I, I've had informal talks and I haven't talked to him specifically because he's got the uh. The one-twenty going on, but uh, there have been talks that we might have opportunity to have space downtown as well.
Oh.
So uh, he, and again, he's, he's working with that Innovate one-twenty with that gr- group of interns right now, very, very diligently, but uh. Uh, through Chuck Curran, he's, he's uh, indicated that he'd like to offer us some space.
Did a tour there last Tuesday.
Yeah, we got to see the kids in action.
Great addition. It's amazing what those kids have exposure to.
Absolutely. It truly is.
Yeah.
We were very fortunate to have Robert. He hasn't moved back.
Yes, absolutely.
Sounds like he's got enough, couple other.
And I, and I told Robert I didn't speak out of turn, but uh, from that's from what I've heard is that uh, he wants, he wants us from down there and some big sources.
The desk is down there in the, in the schoolhouse. Is that yours or is that?
Not really. I think it's, yeah, I think it was at, to my knowledge, and you, you probably, you know better than I do, uh, when it was, when it was uh, first started as a welcome center, I. I think most of those things came from different places and were, were purchased by Jackson County Tourism. So. I don't think we really own anything. Maybe a, oh, a file cabinet. I know we did buy, buy a file cabinet about ten years ago, but other than that.
I, I guess my comment, I, I haven't talked to my fellow board members about it, but I, I, I assume your desk was the one on the second floor.
Absolutely.
I don't see any reason why you couldn't have that desk for your office if it's over here or if it's somewhere else uh, out at the interpreting center.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. At the, at the present time, I don't think we have a use for it.
Sure.
So your desk chair and your desk, I would say that you should be able to take that.
Right, right.
And um.
I'm not gonna help move it though.
No, no.
And I don't know what in the world you're going to do with all the boxes of brochures.
Oh.
I, I, I told, I told the guys and they said, Luanne, I said, there were so many boxes of brochures. I can't imagine where in the world.
Well, most of those, actually, that's a good point, Jack. Most of those um, will, I'll bring to the uh, the. The chamber here in, in McCoquita and Bellevue as well as the Hurstville Interpretative Center. Most of those are in those places and they're, they'll just serve as backup for them, so.
And then we did talk to. Hop and Shop, is that what it's called?
Yes.
And they will put a brochure um, rack in there.
Right.
And we'll have a sign out there that they can stop there and get information, so.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, we'll. Try to get things rounded up and so that we can um. Possibly put the, the, the building on the market.
Good. Good deal. Yeah, I'll get down and get everything out that, that we need to get out and uh, I'll talk with Robert and he may have something there already for me and I'll keep you informed.
Okay, that'll be great.
What we need, what we don't.
Yeah, that might be, you know, a good idea to make fun to get the desk out of there anyway, and whatever you need to do there, whatever you're gonna take out of there, because if we're gonna try to keep it somewhat clean here.
Yeah.
Going forward.
Yeah.
And of course, we have to have a public hearing before we can put it on the market.
Sure, sure.
But um.
How, how are the bugs or?
There were some.
Yeah, not, not, not like just, just what, just what is gonna happen. Yeah, and I've got her coming in periodically to, to check on that. Like once every two weeks, you think any more often than that?
No.
Okay.
That's okay. I was down there a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, great, yeah, I'll just keep her on once every couple of weeks and.
I'll be fine.
And I'll, I've gotta go down there uh, to check on some things here this week also, so I'll, I'll make sure things are in good shape.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, my pleasure. Great to see you.
Okay, at this time we'll recess till we're joined with our next appointment. We'll reconvene the meeting and we're going to be joined by Tony from the Jackson County Veterans Affairs Department.
Morning. Alright gentlemen.
We're fine, thank you.
Yes.
Randy, you wanna talk to what I was handling?
Sure. Thank you.
This is kind of my first meeting with an update, so.
Yeah.
There you go. So there were, there's been a lot of changes in the past twelve months. Um, Debbie resigned last September. I was hired part-time in October. Uh, I started full-time in January. Christie resigned in March and then we, the board allowed us to make some changes, so Debbie was hired as my assistant and Rihanna. Was bumped up to full-time and she also became a C V S O. Rihanna and I were both accredited in March through the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. Um, and we received access to the federal system um, in order to help veterans in May, um, which is quicker than it's ever happened before. Uh, that has to do with technology and how uh, they've had to change the accreditation process, but we both have access, um. Both been assisting veterans with, and Debbie's been there part-time, twenty hours a week, assisting veterans, um. Tried to do, make a few changes, cause I'm full-time, uh, had some freedom that I could go to. Uh, B F W meetings, American Legion meetings and Ambit meetings throughout the county. Uh, we've held coffee and donuts in Sebula and Bellevue. Uh, that we've had great response to. We put out a spring newsletter. Uh, we didn't get quite as much response to our spring newsletter this year as I did the year before. But uh, we still had a pretty good response to that, getting new veterans in the office all the time. There's, according to the G D X report that came out for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there's thirteen hundred and twenty-four veterans in Jackson County. Uh, I think we're doing a pretty good job trying to get the most of them, but that every week I get a call from somebody who's not in our system yet. Uh, and we're, and we're still reaching out and getting, you know, new people in and trying to get them the benefits they've earned or deserve, so um. We plan you to, plan to continue. I think our biggest problem is reaching the younger veterans and uh, getting them involved. The veteran service organizations are seeing it, you know, if you belong to any kind of. Association, you know that the younger people are not coming in like maybe in the past they have. So my fall newsletter is gonna focus on. Uh, the veteran service organizations and trying to get new members and then also coming into our office, uh. I plan to try and hold them, a couple of events, small events like coffee and donuts, but we'll do them maybe at the brewery here in town. It said that they'd be open to us doing something there. And the brewery in Bellevue, um, was open to us doing something there. Uh, and then we planned to do, like I said, the fall newsletter and continue to go to the association meetings uh, throughout the county. It's. I've had really good response to being in Sebula and Preston, I think maybe in the past, just because of that, the director wasn't full-time and couldn't make those meetings, but they felt a little left out. So I've had a really good response to that. I've been on the radio a couple of times. Uh, if you look at what the G D X says, the county is bringing in. Uh, on a monthly basis, veterans in Jackson County are getting a half million dollars brought in in compensation or disability. Uh, and that, you know, we know that money is being spent here in Jackson County. So that's six million dollars a year, and then if you look at the healthcare benefits they're getting. Uh, that's another six million dollars a year, so. Uh, the veterans in Jackson County are bringing in to these, this economy about twelve million dollars a year. Uh, and a, and a lot of that, you know, cause we're looking at fiscal year twenty-one, that's to the credit of uh, Debbie and Christie. They did a lot of hard work and uh. And that's up a million, like one point two million from fiscal year twenty. And we, we're down another thirty-one veterans this year, cause the veterans are only getting older, so uh. You know, I'm, I'm hoping to continue that. We'll stay at that, those levels, but yeah, it's, it's a great impact for the county.
Yeah, that's uh, numbers you really don't realize, I guess, you know, and. I'm surprised. At the fact that younger veterans are not putting their name in the system or having to be in the system.
Well, there, there's some things that go on that didn't happen, uh, if you served in the past. They never talked to us about our V A benefits when we were in the service. So when I got out nineteen ninety-four, I had no idea that I even could get V A benefits. I didn't know I could get V A healthcare until I started this job. I had no idea. Um, and I was a combat veteran who, you know, served in the first Gulf War. Because it's just not something we were briefed on back then. So in two thousand. Ten or two thousand eleven, you know, they'd already been, you know, they considered the Gulf War started in nineteen ninety. Um. So anybody who served since nineteen ninety is considered a war veteran, but it wasn't until two thousand ten that they started. When they're letting people out of the military, people getting discharged, telling them about their V A benefits and trying to work with them. On their V A benefits at the same time they're getting out. So a lot of these younger veterans have been in since two thousand ten, know about their V A benefits and they've made the system. Semi-use, that's not user-friendly, but they try to, the younger veterans try to do a lot of it themselves. And then when they get in a bind, they come to us, because there's all kinds of information about. See, you're counting veteran service officer. Um, and that works, it worked well, and I think it helps if they come see us right away, cause sometimes they can. Get a little too deep into it, maybe screw up the paperwork, but uh. So they know more about veterans' benefits than the older veterans. Um, but.
I would think with the computers and the emails and the, and the social, whatever is. That when you sign up or when you go in, you fill out this paperwork, you're in the system.
And that, that was never that way. No, no, they didn't tell us anything about benefits when we got out years ago. Well, it's weird, cause there was a timeframe, if you look. Kinda me just getting into it, being new to this. There was a timeframe where they had veterans sign off on something that, yeah, I'm not interested in V A benefits at this time. Uh, and, and I don't even know if they knew what they were signing off on. You know, there was a time period like in the, from the sixties into the seventies, where you can see that along with their discharge papers, that they signed something and said, yeah. I'm not interested in pursuing V A benefits at this time, and it's like. Well, I didn't sign anything like that, but it's like, huh.
I might have, I don't.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? So that, it's kinda, but that's how the military is, you know, they don't, and you know, the Department of Defense and the V A are two very separate things, so.
I've been to the facility in Dubuque and it's, I mean, it's like a full-blown hospital in there.
It's gorgeous, beautiful. That is a nice facility. And now, so the one thing I mentioned on the end of uh, my update in this letter, it, is the PACD Act. So the PACD Act's in front of the. U S Senate currently. Uh, it's been passed by the Senate once and went back to the House. There was a procedural mistake. The House passed it, corrected the procedural mistake. It's gotta be passed by the U S Senate again, and it should be passed. They were hoping that the president would assign it on July fourth, but it should be passed. Um, relatively soon, so within the next weeks before they close for the year, everybody's hopes. Um, if the PACD Act passes, that's a quarter of a trillion dollars that is gonna be dumped into the V A for um. Gulf War veterans and then they're adding some presumptives for um, some for, or Vietnam-era veterans who've served in Guam and Taiwan and. Uh, Korea along the D M Z. It's gonna be a huge impact and then they're gonna put nineteen more uh. Sea box, like what's in Dubuque around the, around the United States, brand new facilities. Um, but they're adding, there'll be twenty-three presumptives for the Gulf War veterans. That's a lot, and there's a lot of Gulf War veterans, because. We, anybody from nineteen ninety till now is still considered a Gulf War veteran. So if you served in Afghanistan or Iraq, or really in any of those countries where there were burn pits, uh, this PACD Act is gonna. Have all these presumptives. If you think about it, Vietnam veterans with Agent Orange have fourteen presumptives that, that they can get service connected for. The Gulf War veterans are gonna have twenty-three uh, presumptive cancers and disabilities and a lot of it sinus issues and breathing issues, but it's a lot. So there's gonna be a lot of work coming. Uh, we, we're, we don't know what that impact's gonna look like until it's passed and the. V A has said it's gonna be. You know, it's not all gonna just be at once. It's gonna be phased in over a time period, but that's a quarter of a trillion dollars. It's gonna. Come into the V A in the next couple of years and it's gonna make us very busy.
Yeah, I'm sure, well, my stepson was in um, Iraq. And he said they were using a jet fuel, which is diesel fuel for dust control on the sand. And I'm like. Who thought that one up? I mean, you had, and you're coming around, the whole place would light up in a torch and just, but then you're breathing that stuff too. I, I hate to smell it.
Where's this, where's this camp at that had the contaminated water?
Camp Lejeune, so.
That's all I see anymore.
So, and, and really, and I'm not sure why all of a sudden it's, so they came out, the presumptives for Camp Lejeune came out in June twenty-one. Um. And there's several, you know, uh, cancers related to having served in Camp Lejeune, if you were there prior to nineteen eighty-seven. Um, I did. And what I like to tell veterans, and if you know any veterans that are interested, make sure they call us. The one thing about the V A is, and he probably used to see those things about the hearing. Or the earplugs they gave veterans that they could get into that lawsuit. If they get into the lawsuit. Then they're not eligible for V A benefits. You can't file for lawsuits against the government and then also get V A benefits, so. So, and I'm gonna put an ad in the paper coming up, cause I wanna make sure people understand that that is clear. Uh, that call us first. Well, if you've served at Camp Lejeune, call us first and we'll make, and you have any of these conditions, we'll, we'll help you. And we'll get you the compensation that you've earned or deserved, but if, if they start calling these lawyers and getting into these lawsuits that really. And we'll get you the compensation that you've earned or deserved, but it, it, they started calling these lawyers and getting into these lawsuits that really kinda ties our hands to help them.
Yeah.
So, and.
That's good information to get out there, because it could be. I mean, that's all you see anymore on, on social media.
I don't understand why it's gotten so big.
Maybe it's a, maybe it's a trick.
So, to keep the bottom line, read some lawyers get propaganda.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's the thing, I mean, if they're getting, yeah, then.
So I, I, that is, that was one of the things that came out of my last commission meeting, is put an ad in the paper. Mostly, I think, so people are seeing our name out there, but also to kinda give everybody, hey, this, you know, if you're, we're at Lejeune, call us first, don't call us.
I see you've been on K and A Q a couple of times, is that correct?
That is correct.
I think it's great you're going out and, and being in the public. And meeting with the veterans, and I think it's wonderful.
Well, that's why I'm here, that's what I came for, it's a lot better than my old job.
Well, we appreciate it, Tom, can, if you need anything, make sure you ask it.
Okay, and I'm more than happy to report more often, whenever you need me to come in, it's uh.
Quarterly would be great.
Quarterly, okay, and I'll plan on that, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a good day, thank you.
This time we'll recess till Lynn gets here.
This time we're. At this time we'll reconvene, and we're being joined by Lynn Holmes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here following the July Regional Government Board meeting that Jack and I attended yesterday in Danforth, just to give you a little bit of an update. And I guess the. News that we were all waiting for after June thirtieth was what's the best closest projection to date of where the region landed with their fund balance. In relation to the Iowa code saying that regions were allowed to have a forty percent fund balance, ours is an upwards of ninety percent. We're about four million dollars over the forty percent allowable amount. So, there is an opportunity for regions, and Lori's taking advantage of it, to apply to the state, to DHS. To encumber some money that is included in contracts that have been signed for services in FY twenty-three. The process is, the regions can send an application by July thirty-first to DHS. For those contracts where money is committed for the year, um, and which. Was actually started in FY twenty-two, but it wasn't completed. Lori's intent is that she will probably have about four point six million dollars, that she will request DHS to approve for encumbrance. We really don't know what, how DHS will decide on that. If they will accept all, all of those services um, to be used, and if that were to happen, then. The region can carry over that additional four million that we have, without it penalizing us as far as our payments from the state. DHS would not approve that, approve that request, then um, it's likely that. The region would not receive their payment for the third quarter, or before January first of twenty twenty-three. And maybe not a full payment for the fourth quarter, which would be before April first of twenty twenty-three. DHS has until August thirty-first to make that decision and inform the regions. Final numbers for that will not be in place until after December first, when. The counties and regions will have sent their financial information for FY twenty-two to the Department of Management. For review, so final figures will be based on those reports to the state. Anything else, Jack, you want to add about that? I think that pretty well wraps it up. Uh, Lori did share with the board yesterday that there are numerous regions. That are well over the forty percent fund balance, and a number of those regions have opted to not even request any allowance for any dollars that are encumbered. And they are just going to work with the state and.
And if, if our encumbrance isn't approved, then it looks like the first two payments, we will not get.
Well, it certainly appears that would draw a red flag to somebody if there's that much overbalances throughout, um, yes.
Well, you know, the whole thing is though, and, and, and we talked about yesterday, and then I brought up at our board meeting is. We've approved numerous programs to provide services, but they can't get the staff to do it.
Yeah.
There's nobody out there that's looking for jobs, and so, you know, you, you plan that in your budget. That they're gonna be able to provide those services, and they can't, because they can't get the manpower to do it. And so, obviously, we wouldn't have these millions of dollars setting uh, um, in the bank if. We were being, were able to provide services that we contracted or wanted to start.
Yeah, if you remember in months past, we talked about, uh, you would ask about spending the money and being concerned that it not be spent frivolously, but. Is it committed, and yes, the board did agree to a budget in the name of the effective January one through June thirtieth, and that would have. Consumed a lot of this overage over the forty percent, and Jack's exactly right, I mean, and. Uh, providers were very upfront about that, when Robert Young would talk to the, these providers about expanding services, adding positions. That the providers are very willing to do it, but their concern right from the beginning was available workforce, so.
What about continuing funding with the state, I mean, if you started these programs, if you were to be able to start a new state program, continue to fund that?
Well, if you remember, um, the Senate filed that. Uh, transition from county to region, or to state funding. Has a plan through fiscal year twenty twenty-five of increasing the per capita rate to the regions. Got increased this year from thirty-eight, I believe, to forty, and I think next fiscal year goes up to forty-two dollars per capita. Um, and I think there's an increase here for FY twenty twenty-five, so there is a. There is also built in to the revenue that regions will get, an increase for the next three fiscal years. So yeah, sustainability for services is something that the board and management team and providers are always looking at, but it does look like we'll have. Increased revenue for the next three years, so that should sustain.
That's a lot of the other programs, like we had the.
Well, yesterday at our, we had a meeting at one o'clock for the children's um, advisory committee, and under crisis, it said, um. I'm assuming it was Annie Whitmire.
The old lady, yes.
Where they're gonna have residential for you, it's, and I wrote down, looking for staff. Community-based family resources, looking for staff. Step in Lutheran Family Services, working with law enforcement and emergency department, functional family services referrals, needing additional staff. And so, you know, every place, every time you turned around, it was. They can't do everything they wanna do, because they don't have the people to provide the services. And then we also talked about, um, the uh. Not with the children, but um, the uh, drug ride-along.
All right.
Right now, Clinton and Muscatine have that, and they've been having some real successes with it. And now they're going to increase that to have the other three counties have somebody working with the sheriff's department or the police department. To um, provide services and ride along if there's a, a need to have them do that. And I, I'm really anxious for that.
Yeah, you know, one of the challenges in a more rural county is how do you, how do you time it so that the person is available and ride along when the need is there?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the challenge in a less populated area, but yes, Jack's right, pilot project in Clinton County, or the city of Clinton PD. I would say is almost moved beyond a pilot to a permanent program, and I believe they ride along for almost forty hours, I think, thirty-two maybe a week. Uh, Muscatine started several months ago, and they ride along twelve hours a week, I think it is, but they're. Both the law enforcement side of it and the region's crisis system are real happy with the response. So, but personnel will be an issue moving forward.
And they also talked about um, uh, Foundation Two, um, will be working in the schools, working with kids, faculty, and kitchen staff, just to see. What the crises are and how to prevent them. Um, because they're the ones that are actually with the kids.
Yeah. Uh, in mentioning Foundation Two, this was just touched on yesterday, but uh, you probably have seen some publicity, July sixteenth or Saturday was the day that the. Nationally, they implemented the three-digit dialing for the suicide mental health hotline, nine eight eight. However, uh, one of the challenges and the concerns is that the call centers that are receiving these calls. And in the state of Iowa, there are two designated agencies, one is Foundation Two out of Cedar Rapids, the other one's called Community. And I'm not really sure where they're based out of, but they're severely understaffed to take on the volume of calls and anticipating it's gonna happen. When I was in Des Moines in June for the CEO meeting on behalf of Lori, I really, Foundation Two said they had thirty-four full-time positions. But they thought they needed to have, and ought to be fully staffed at their call center. To handle the volume, so while nationally that number has rolled out. Individual states are not necessarily prepared for it, and certainly agencies that are designated to do that kind of work are not fully equipped. So, we'll see. Um, there was a request on the part of Life Connections from DeWitt, if you remember, they were given three hundred thousand dollars to. Increase their capacity for the Ronda's House respite home, and they purchased the Windsor Hotel in DeWitt. Which has a house, an office, and then thirteen rooms, twelve to thirteen rooms of the hotel. They're using the house for five respite beds and the office for Life Connections office, but the hotel is sitting idle. Um, and Life Connections has no interest in running it as a hotel, motel, I guess. But right now, that's the only way those, that building can be used, it cannot be used for a different purpose. So, Life Connections has been given the, okay from the region that if they were to sell it, what to do with the. Revenue from that sale, and basically keeping escrow for five years to put it towards ongoing. Costs of maintaining the, the Ronda's House services. You may want.
And we, we, um. We've been dealing with that for the last three meetings, and finally yesterday, they uh, decided that they would allow that to be sold. Um, big problem was the city of, of DeWitt, some of, what they wanted to use it for, the city would not allow it. It wasn't zoned for that, so um, I guess they're going to, um, he's going, it's gonna go up on the market and uh. Be sold.
So they could use that for a halfway house or a.
No, no, that was uh, transitional living or homeless shelter, or those kinds of programs is what Todd thought down the road that. He would be interested in, and there are programs that are highly needed, not just within our region, but across the state.
The city should absolutely know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that at our Department of Corrections meeting too, about having a place to get people to transition, I mean, it's hard to find apartments if you're, you know, that you need. I mean, there's just so many things that come to play.
Yeah, I mean, in many ways, that setup of a motel like that would have been an ideal location for single rooms like that. The twenty eighty agreement has been revised, and you should be getting a copy of that. For your signature, your review and approval, it had to be revised due to the new change in language and funding structure. There really weren't any, I would say, content changes. Other than taking off the weighted voting from the governing board members, but otherwise, it was mainly clarifying some things due to the new funding structure.
And then there's some clarif, there was some clarification in, um. There, the, the money for the counties to pay Lynn and her staff and the expenses of the office. They can't do it the way that they wanted to, because the state auditor said, no, it has never passed inspection during the, the uh. Audit, and so uh, we had, they have to give the money to us upfront. And, and then we allocate the bills back to the, to the region. Which is, I think, crazy, I liked it much better when they could do it, and then we would be reimbursed for the, the funds, but that's not. Oh, the state auditor said we could do it, so we'll be getting that.
So, yeah, you'll remember that there was a memorandum of understanding that came through, and it, it laid all that out, what expenses can be reimbursed. And on what method it would be, it would be done, it was originally intended to be done on a quarterly basis. When the region realized that the method that was being proposed was not acceptable to both Department of Management, I would say, and the Auditor's Office. Um, Lori and David developed the plan that Jack is referring to, but in the one big difference is now the county will be sending an invoice to the region on a monthly basis. For reimbursement, so. Uh, that, I think, was about all that I was going to mention about the um. Agenda for the governing board meeting, I will just mention that Norman Hinkie presented in the public comment section. In his role, that he currently serves, it being a retired banker, financial officer. Uh, currently, he's working with the Iowa State Extension, focusing on stress on the farm. And resources that are available, the, he gave two that are really good handouts, the one handout we already have on our region's website, yeah, I forgot to bring that. Uh, the stress on the farm one, but then there's another one. And they're really uh, doing a broad-brush sweep of who that he's in contact with, so it's not just lenders and financial people, but it's ag people, um.
Anybody, anything that has to do with, whether it's buying seed, or whether it's buying equipment, um, he's dealing with all of those providers of services to the. Rural community.
Yeah, so I think that is a good, uh, that was good information that he shared with us, and it's a good resource that the extension has put out there. Specific to mental health in the farming agricultural community.
And he did say that he had been to several places in Jackson County.
Yes, he's also working with school districts, that was the one I was trying to remember. Um, in order for them to also be in tune to, you know, what's going on in the rural areas.
The stress might be.
Yeah, and what the kids bring to the school, and the other thing he pointed out, which is always a relevant fact, that sometimes I think we overlook. Whenever there's marketing like this or anything put out there, it's not even just the people that are in the community we want to reach that might need it, but it's. The employees of all these different programs and things, and their families and their neighbors, that they might come into contact with, even if they themselves are not in a position that we typically would try to target. So it really does get the information out to a broad spectrum of people. And that was about it, I guess. So Jack has five more meetings left, so after that, one of you other lucky people. Has shoes to fill, yeah, so, okay, any questions?
Just a little tidbit about, you know, we talked about not having enough people. Every report on, I think, the Cockamere, Jackson County. Thirty-three percent of the, of working force in Jackson County is between the age sixty-five and seventy-five, thirty-three percent. Or past retirement.
That's not a surprise.
I know, but it's like scary.
Yeah, it was like the article in TH on Sunday, yeah, it was an article about baby boomers retiring and. Who's gonna work and who's gonna train the new workers, yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know what happened to the legislation last year, but it was in legislation, but they never passed anything that you could earn up to X amount of dollars and still collect social security, that's why. They want them people back in the workforce. They only make eighteen thousand dollars, and they'll take social security away from you.
Right.
Unless you wait until you're retirement sixty-six. And then you can make as much as you want, but if you retired at sixty-two or sixty-two and a half, you're restricted to that eighteen thousand. And that's keeping a lot of people, I mean, yeah, they can work for a little bit, and after that, they lose their benefits.
Right, eighteen thousand adds up pretty fast in some of those positions. Yeah, I, it's a, I, I think all aspects of the system have to take a look at what they can do, and I guess. Possible, that's all, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks Lynn. I guess, it's our agenda today, unless somebody has any other committees or boards.
Two gentlemen get the email, I sent to Kelly, we're working with Lynn on the Senator Pino recommendations and. The right, correct language in that whole thing is, it was quite a report that Kelly was working on there too, so I appreciate her help with that. I hope you guys got it, anyway, I didn't realize you were, I'm sending it to your new email, so I don't.
So I was just scanning through our conservation minutes, and we approved a low-fly event. At the Iowa City Aerobics, we'd like to hold a crisp while, and. At the Iowa City Aero Hops, we'd like to hold a Driscoll Island and it will be the thirtieth. And thirty-first from eight to nine P M each day. And what they have is remote control. Airplanes that land on water, somewhere up to eight foot wingspans. And so they'll be flying.
And where are they doing this at?
Driscoll Island. At Sebelo, they're using them on a lake out there. Big lake.
Yeah.
And that would be their landing and takeoff area, but it sounds, some of these are really elaborate bomber planes and just whatever. So if you're coming across a levy down there and you see an old war plane coming at you.
Watch out.
Well, they like to early, take off early in the morning to start at eight AM because the water's calm and the wind isn't up and then they have another window. Later at night when the sun starts to come down, the winds dry down so that water isn't so choppy. That's their concern. Landing and taking off in the water. But it sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, if you get some more information on that, send that out too.
That's all I've got here is the. Hope Saturday and Sunday. Eight to nine, eight in the morning till nine o'clock at night.
Okay. Anything else?
There's no further business. I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?